Call meeting to order. Rob, would you please lead us in the pledge? It's over here, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer tonight, please?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us to be in today. Father, we ask that your perfect will will be done in tonight's meeting. Lord, give us wisdom and insight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Anita, roll call, please.
Counselor Foster.
Present.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Mayor Protemsebola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
The forums, the clerks.
Do you have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and review and approval of accounts payable.
Moved to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May nineteenth and the accounts payable.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Protemsebola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Send us some comments. Said counsel, welcome during scheduled comments. Leave limit of comments to three minutes. Counsel will not take action at this same meeting. Anybody? All right, move on to scheduled appearances. First one we have is request how the farmers market at the facet parking lot, and I'm assuming that would be Chelsea. Good to see you, Chelsea. Chelsea.
Nice being here on the regular. Don't miss having me talk in public. So, if any, I'm sure all of you know me by now, but just for the record, my name is Chelsea Martinez. I'm the co-manager of the Montevista Farmers Market. So we've scheduled our dates this year with your approval from July the eighth through September the sixteenth on Fridays from nine to one in the facet parking lot, and if you guys approve us being there. We're having much the same plan this year as last year with fewer restrictions. Hopefully, everything stays that way. We're just working with public health to make sure that there's nothing else that we're gonna do differently or anything else that we have to add at the last minute, but so far, so good. We're going to try to have live music again this year. Our restrictions the last couple of years were just too difficult. They had to have a space with eleven feet circumference between the performer and the next person. It was just too much last year, so hopefully this year it'll work out better. We can have live music again. We are expecting a lot of the same vendors and a couple new vendors this year. Been getting a lot of feedback on social media. Just a little snippet of what we did last year. In city sales tax, the farmers market in total last year paid seven hundred thirty-five dollars and two cents. And then, of course, we paid county and state tax as well. I can let you guys know that if you would like. We did, we distributed a thousand forty-eight dollars in SNAP vouchers and six hundred and eighty dollars in double-up vouchers. So just a quick overview what those are. These ones are our SNAP vouchers. So people with a SNAP card, we have a machine set up that they come and run their card, and then we give them however much they would prefer in these vouchers, and they could spend these with the vendors. The vendors then turn them in to me at the end of the day, and I pay them back same as cash, and I'll reimburse for those. Now, the double-up food buck vouchers are a little bit different. So this is a specialized grant program, and it matches up to twenty dollars a week in SNAP benefits. And these can only be used on fresh fruits and vegetables or certain dried products like dried beans. And then, of course, our market bucks, we just kind of, we distribute as a promotional to various people that come in. Or I tried to do like a photo contest last year for some market dollars and like a get-to-meet-your-vendor, get-to-meet-your-vendors contest. So my focus this year is I really want the customers to have more opportunities to connect with local growers and the local people that are gonna be there, the vendors that are gonna be there, so they can kind of understand a little bit more about what goes into the products that they're buying there. So I think Tumbleweed Bread did a great job of that last year, and hopefully they come again this year under the impression that they were planning on it. So they did a good job of like outreach and explaining their processes and things like that. So hopefully we can have a little bit more about that, and people can better connect with their food and the arts and crafts that we have as well. Do you have any questions for me or anything I forgot?
Nope, we just need it. Approve this.
I would move that we approve Montevista Farmers Market request to use the parking lot at First Avenue and Jefferson Street for the twenty twenty-two market season.
Been moved and seconded to approve the farmers market using the parking lot of First and Jefferson from July eighth through September sixteenth. Is there any more discussion?
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So the only thing that we would request, Chelsea, is that they're painting a mural on that wall.
Oh, okay.
And so just to make sure you give the artist enough space. He hopes to be completed by stampede, but they've started on it already, so.
That's good. Nice.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess the other thing, too, would be the city helps cover the booths that use electricity there. So if there's an extra expense or something with that, we can look at that. This is the last year that we're gonna be under the grant that we were before, and then it'll be back to volunteer and only with the market generates basis. But we can try and see if there's something in the budget if the city needs reimbursement for the electricity.
No?
No. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Hey, Anita?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Protemsebola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the farmers market July eighth through September sixteenth on Fridays from nine to one at the facet parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Yes, it's gonna be a fun discussion. Twenty twenty-one audit, what are you, any associates? So I'm gonna slide this over a little bit. I can kinda see.
Behind me.
All right.
All right, so my name's Kyle Logan. I'm the owner of Logan and Associates, the independent auditors certified public accountants for the city. And I'm here this evening to present the results of the city's financial statements audit for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And so I know you all received the financial statements electronically, so that's good. And this will be the first year of us presenting, showing it this way, so I kinda, this is kinda new to me, too. So anyway, we performed the audit in two phases, basically. We came out, I believe, around December seventh. And that's where we do a lot of preliminary stuff, where we pick samples of cash disbursements, payroll, utility billings, and we look at the internal controls of the city for all these processes. And we look at procedures and policies that have been put in place. And so we're making sure that, you know, that perhaps the money that's going out, either in terms of payments to vendors or payments to employees, have proper authorization, proper approvals, and are recorded in the financial accounting records properly. We also do some preliminary comparisons of balances as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one compared to twenty twenty. And we also look at some, as far as the minutes, look at new contracts, new agreements that might have a financial impact on the city. And then that kind of covers our preliminary work. And then at the year end, that's where we concentrate on the financials and on the numbers that you see in the financial statements. And so we send out confirmations to like banks, to the organizations that the city has loans or debt with. Also, we confirm certain revenue streams, sales tax, property taxes, franchise taxes, and compare that to what's been recorded in the accounting records to see that, you know, if that gives us a good understanding of the financial statements as well as giving me comfort in order to issue an opinion on the financial statements. And so the financial statements, all the statements, all the footnote disclosures in this document, they're responsibility of the city's management. Our responsibility is to audit those and issue an opinion. And so as we have up here on the right side, there is an independent auditor's report. And so that format has changed this year from previous years. And I actually like this newer format because it puts the opinion at the very first, where before it was in like either the second or third page. So I like this being at the very front, those top two paragraphs. And so for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, the city received an unmodified opinion. Now, in layman's terms, that's a clean opinion. That is the best that the city can receive from an independent audit. What that tells you as a city council, that tells you that all the numbers in this document, all the footnote disclosures in this document are fairly stated and materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for a local government entity. So again, that's the best that you can receive. Okay, so then following the independent auditor's report, if you scroll down one more page, is the management's discussion and analysis. And these pages here, basically, this is kind of a written narrative of certain things that have occurred over the past year and certain activities related to revenues and expenses of the city. And it also, at a high level, compares twenty-one with twenty twenty, okay? And so again, it's just something that's required. Years ago, the accounting standards for local governments wanted local governments to basically report certain things similar to like a publicly traded company. So that's the purpose of the management's discussion and analysis. Okay, so if we scroll through that, you got a few pages to go, Anita. Okay, now we're at the, go down one more, we're at the basic financial statements. And so the basic financial statements are pages one through nine. The first two pages are the statement of net position and statement of activities. And what these are, these are showing all of the city's funds combined into either governmental activities or business-type activities. Your business-type activities, that's your water and sewer funds, okay? Governmental activities, that's your general fund and all your other funds. And what this reporting does, this is how a business or a public company would report their financial statements on what's called a full accrual basis, okay? And so really, you only see this reporting at the year end when we present the financial statements, okay? And so what I'll point out, what I like about this is it shows everything of the city in one page. And as of December thirty-first, this is like a snapshot picture of all the assets of the city, all the liabilities or claims against those assets, and the net position or net worth. And so for twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, your total assets were thirty-one and a half million. That's about an eight-point-eight million dollar increase over twenty twenty. Now, the majority of that is in the Sky High complex, the completion of that. But you also had a pretty significant increase in your cash and investments, primarily from sales tax revenues, which I'll touch on in a little bit. And so of your total assets, your cash and investments, the top two lines there, at just about six-point-six million, that makes up twenty-one percent of your total assets. And then your capital assets, that's about twenty-two and a half million, which makes up seventy-two percent. So those two categories make up, you know, ninety-three percent of the city's assets. And again, the capital assets, they increased by about six million. The majority of that is related to the Sky High complex being pretty much complete by the end of the year. So then the next section there is your liabilities. Total liabilities, they're about eight-point-four million. This is about a two-point-eight million increase over last year. Significant part of that is your accounts payable, about seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, which that's a large increase because there were some payables at the end of the year that related to the Sky High complex that weren't paid until twenty twenty-two. And so they, because they related to December and November, we booked those back, okay? The other part is, there's a line, a new line on there called unearned revenue, four-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand. That's basically the ARPA money that the city received. That's the amount that wasn't spent at the end of the year. I know the city spent a small portion of it in twenty twenty-one. And so you have till December of twenty twenty-four to spend that. And of course, the city will be receiving the second tranche here this year sometime. I'm not, I haven't heard yet when it's coming. Have you?
Probably around June, maybe?
So you'll be receiving the second amount of that, okay? And again, there are some certain restrictions on how that money can be spent. And then the other section, the biggest part of your liabilities is your long-term debt, and that's about six-point-nine million. We had a net increase of about one-point-six million over last year. And so the biggest part of that increase is the two-and-a-half million dollar loan or lease purchase agreement that was taken out that related to the Sky High complex. And so that'll be paid down, which the city is receiving basically a donation each year to make the payments on that. So that's nice, okay? So then we get down to the net position or net worth of the city. So for all the governmental activities and business-type activities, you're about twenty-two-point-eight million. That's about five-point-four million or thirty-one percent increase over last year. The majority of that is in your invested, net investments in your capital assets of about fifteen-point-six million. Restricted monies, and so your restricted, these are monies that have been restricted either by state law or statute or an outside restriction. And so you're restricted net position about two million. But then your unrestricted, that has no strings attached to it, is five-point-one million. And so that's split between, you know, your governmental activities is about three-point-two million. Your business-type activities is about one-point-nine or two million of that. And so if we were to look at that unrestricted piece there and compared it to the expenses on page two, to kind of get an idea of, well, how much do we have in operations? Your governmental activities could operate ten months if all the expenses were the same as what we're gonna see here on page two in a minute. So, you know, that's not too bad. So what that means is, you know, if for whatever reason the revenue stream dried up, the city could sustain for ten months, okay? Your water and sewer activities, you actually have about one year worth of operations in that. So that's pretty good, okay? But again, keep in mind, unrestricted monies, you know, you guys have control of that. If you want to designate some of it or commit some of it for certain projects or things, you're allowed to do that, okay? But that's what's carried over into twenty twenty-two. All right, so that kind of covers the statement of net position. The next one, this is the statement of activities. And so this statement flows on the two pages, and it basically starts at the left with expenses and then goes over to program revenues and then flows down to the bottom right of your general revenues. And so your program revenues, these are revenues like charges for services, grants or donations that the city receives that are specific to one of the programs, whether it's general government, public safety, public works, et cetera, okay? And so your governmental activities expenses, basically your governmental funds, about three-point-nine million, which is very comparable to twenty twenty, okay? Business type is about one-point-nine million, again, very comparable to twenty twenty. So, you know, with twenty twenty being the COVID year and twenty twenty-one kind of finishing up with that, you know, you guys have kind of watched your spending, so that's good, okay? Your program revenues, the governmental, are about four-point-six million. Most of that is related to the donations and the contributions for the Sky High complex. Your business type is about two-point-six million. And again, that's a slight increase over last year, which that's mostly your user charges that you bill your customers and your residents for water and sewer, okay? So then we get down to this right side here, the general revenues. And of course, the biggest line there is your sales and use taxes. And when we look at that, you know, that's about three-and-a-half million. It's about a five-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-dollar increase or eighteen percent increase over last year. And one thing I've noticed with my municipal clients is I'm seeing this increase. It kind of started when COVID happened. People stayed home and started ordering stuff online. And so that's continuing, and, you know, that's a good thing. Because now that, when Colorado was able to start collecting sales tax, which was a couple of years ago, you know, you're getting the benefit of those purchases being made by residents, okay? Your franchise revenues, about one-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, that's about a seventeen percent increase over last year. And then we also have in there, in the miscellaneous, that's six-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. A lot of that is related to the money received for the, related to the lease payment that was made for twenty twenty-one. And so then we end up with a net income governmental activities of about five-point-three million, which increased your net position by forty-six percent. And your business type or water and sewer, about one-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, okay? And so, so again, this is presented as if the city was operating like one of your businesses here in town, okay? So now, if we move on to page three, this is the balance sheet of the governmental funds. This is what you guys are used to seeing throughout the year. It's what we call modified accrual basis of accounting. And so the way it's presented is that there's certain thresholds that make a fund be determined as a, what we call a major fund. That's your general fund, your one cent sales tax fund, your capital projects fund, and your capital improvements fund, okay? And then over on the right, the other governmental funds, that's all your other funds that are combined into that one column, which we have a combining schedule later on in the financial statements. So your total assets for your governmental funds, six-point-four million, increase of about two-point-four million or fifty-nine percent over last year. Of that, cash and investments makes up five million of your governmental funds assets. And that's about a two-point-one million increase. So the majority of the increase in your assets is in your cash and investments, so that's a good thing, okay? Your total liabilities are about one-point-two million. Again, that's a significant increase over last year. A lot of that, part of it is related to the payables related to Sky High complex, which I mentioned, and then also that four-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand of the unearned ARPA grant that you will have available to spend in this next year, okay? So then it comes down to fund balance, and so this is your net worth of each fund. And so the total fund balance, about four-point-seven million. You know, of that, the restricted is about two million or forty-two percent of it. Your committed and assigned, that's about one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. But then that leaves your unrestricted, which is all in your general fund of two-point-six million. Well, you know, I'd mentioned about the governmental activities having ten months' worth of expenditures. Well, this is just your general fund specifically. Two-point-six million is about nine months' worth of expenditures of the general fund. And that is if, you know, all the expenditures are the same from year to year. So again, that's pretty good for a general fund. Because then that, if, you know, something unforeseen happens, then the city has these funds available to either commit or assign for unforeseen things. But also, it's for you to carry over into the next year to help cover expenditures. Okay, so then the next page, page four, I won't spend a lot of time on that. Basically, what page four does, it reconciles the fund balance on page three to the net position on page one, okay? Page five is the next one. This is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, this is basically your net income or income statement that shows the net income or loss by your funds. And, you know, I'm happy to say that all your funds had net income this year, so that's good. That doesn't always happen. And so again, your total revenue is about nine-point-three million. A lot of, is about two-point-one million increase over twenty twenty. Most of that is in your taxes, primarily sales and use taxes, and then also the intergovernmental and donations. So related to Sky High, you had a DOLA grant that was received for the Sky High complex project. And then we also had the FAA grant for the airport work that was done this past year, okay? So again, these intergovernmental revenues, they'll kind of fluctuate from year to year depending on what projects the city has and what outside funding you're receiving for them. Total expenditure is about ten-point-seven million. That's about a four-point-four million dollar increase over last year. Well, the significant piece of that is the completion of the Sky High complex. So I expect that to drop this year in twenty twenty-two, depending on what other projects get going this year, so, okay? So then that, the other thing down here, near the bottom here, we show the two-and-a-half million dollar of the lease proceeds that the city received. So then that, you know, ends with a total net income for all the funds of about one-point-two million, which is a thirty-five percent increase in your fund balance, okay? Then page six, here on the left side, again, this is a reconciliation. It reconciles the net income from page five to the net income on page two. And then page seven over on the right, this is your statement of, not yet, thank you. This is your statement on proprietary funds or your water and sewer funds, basically your balance sheet, your snapshot picture at twelve thirty-one of all your assets, liabilities, and net position or net worth. And so again, total assets, nine-point-one million, very comparable to twenty twenty. Total liabilities of three million, a slight decrease over twenty twenty. And then we have net position or net worth of six-point-one million, which is about a two-and-a-half percent increase over last year. So again, if we look at, concentrating on the unrestricted monies here, the one-point-three million for the water fund and the five-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand for the sewer fund, we look at, if we look at operations that are presented on the next page, your water fund basically has twenty months' worth of operations, and it's unrestricted. And your sewer has about seven months. Now, you know, you look at that and you think, twenty months, wow, that's a long time. But you guys have a water main break or a water line break, and just like that, that could be gone. So it's good to have that unrestricted amount in there for unforeseen things that could happen, okay? So it's good to have that unrestricted amount in there for unforeseen things that could happen. Okay? Let's see, then if we scroll down another page, over here on the left, statement of revenues, expenses and changes in fund net position, basically your income statement. So your operating revenues were about 2.1 million, just a slight decrease over 2020. Your operating expenses were 1.9 million. Again, a slight decrease over 2020. And then your, so your operating income is about 250,000 for the water fund and about 21,000 for the sewer fund. So your operations are, you know, are providing income, which that's good. Because I don't always see that, especially with water and sewer activities. And so then we also have down near the bottom where the tap fees are, we have that. We also have in non-operating revenues, some grant revenue, which some of that is ARPA money, I believe. And also then, we also had the, let's see, Energy Impact Assistance Fund grant related to the water and sewer master plan study that the city received to help offset some of those expenses. The other thing is that these two funds, they transfer out about 99,000 each to the general fund to kind of cover administrative type costs that aren't directly billed from the general fund to the two funds. And so that's something that during the budget process, you guys approve. And so that transfer is made each year. And so again, your net income, water fund, after all that, the water fund has about 188,000. But you had a slight net loss in the sewer fund of about 36,000. And you know, a lot of that is related to the transfer out. But again, your sewer funds operations are creating income. So that's good. Okay, then the page over on the right, this is the statement of cash flows for the water and sewer funds. And so it's presented in four categories, operating, non-capital financing and capital and related financing and investing. And so when I'm putting this together and coming up with my conclusions in order to issue an opinion, I'm looking at that top part, are your operations cash flowing? And they are. So your water fund had cash flow of about 311,000. Your sewer fund had about 371,000 cash flow. So that's good. That's good that it's generating that amount. Because then that helps this next section there of the payment to the general fund. But it also helps with your payment of your debt that's been issued over the years. And then any purchases or of capital assets, equipment or, you know, line, new lines or things like that. Okay? So that's good. You guys paid down debt approximately 120,000. And again, those are scheduled payments that you make each year. So that amount's going to be about the same each year. It'll gradually increase as time goes. But again, your operations are cash flowing. So that's the biggest takeaway from this statement. Okay, so then the next section, this is the longest section, the footnotes, pages 10 through 37. And you need to probably go kind of fast, but this first part here, note one, this is your summary of significant accounting policies. The accounting standards require certain things to be disclosed in the financial statements that one, either support numbers up in the statements that we already talked about, or just required disclosures. And so this note one, primarily pages 10 through 17 covers a lot of that, just relate different things that are required to be reported. But then starting on page 17, there at the bottom, and then you can scroll on one more. Is your cash and investments footnote. And so that tells you where all your cash and investments are invested or deposited, whether it's either in, you know, banks or whether, you know, a significant amount of it you have is in COLA trust. Okay? You had about 1.1 million in COLA trust, but the majority of the rest of it is in the bank. Okay? And so again, this tells you certain things that are required to be disclosed. Down in the lower right-hand corner there, talks about the restrictions on cash and investments. A lot of that's related to the debt. There's certain requirements that money be kind of set aside to help with future payments on the debt. Okay? And so then following on the next page, note three is the inter-fund transfers. So we already talked about the transfers between the water and sewer funds to the general fund. There are other transfers that happen. And so this footnote discloses and tells what those transfers are related to and why. And then on page 21, 21 and 22, this is your capital assets. So again, this shows on 21, this is the governmental activities. On 22, business type or your water and sewer activities. So this shows all the, you know, land, buildings, equipment that the city owns. And then the related depreciation on those categories. And then on pages 23 through 27, this is your long-term debt. And so again, the first part there in 23, this is your governmental activities, which basically is the, has your capital leases, which includes that lease purchase that happened this year of the 2.5 million. But then we also had the 2018 sales tax revenue bond refunding that you guys are paying down. And there at the bottom shows the future debt requirements in 2028, that bond will be paid off. Okay? And then over on the next page, this is your governmental or your business type activities over here on 25. And again, talks about all the water loans throughout the years that have been, you know, taken out by the city in order to finance certain projects related to the water and sewer systems. And again, then continuing on 26 and 27, these are just more disclosures of the payments. And so the water and sewer loans will be paid off in 2048. Then pages 28 through 36, this is all your pension plans. And so you have the, on 28 here, the defined contribution pension plan for basically all the non-public safety or non-police employees is administered through ICMA. And so really that's because it's defined contribution, there's not a lot of disclosure there. But then starting on 28 all the way to 36, this is all the FPPA pension plans. Again, basically what it is, is that because the plan is what's called a cost-sharing multi-employer pension plan. And so the city has a piece of that. And so the accounting standards require that either the pension liability or asset, in your case, is recorded up there on page one. And so then it also requires all this additional disclosure. We auditors aren't a big fan of this because it's, sometimes it just seems like an exercise in futility to get through this stuff. Because the numbers fluctuate so much from year to year. And it's based on the actuaries that the city doesn't even have any control over. Because it's all controlled by FPPA. But again, it's required by the accounting standards. So that's what these pages cover. And then on pages, the last couple of pages, 36 and 37, we talk about, you know, commitments and contingencies there. You know, there because the Department of Public Health had issued that potential penalty, we put a disclosure there just because right now we don't know what the outcome is. And so we put that just to let the reader notice. Because if it wasn't in there and someone might be going, well, why don't we see this? Okay? And then also I left the paragraph related to the coronavirus pandemic. It's technically, they haven't said it's over. But I have a feeling in 2022, we'll probably eliminate that disclosure hopefully. And then we have the construction commitment of what's left, you know, of the Sky High complex. Related to that, start out about 4.4 million related to the one company, not the entire project. And there's about 468,000 left at the end of December. Okay? And then the one thing there at the very end, we did restate some balances related to the Sky High project. Not a significant concern from our standpoint as the auditors. But it was just the timing of some of the payables and some of the receivables related to money that was paid out and money that was received related to the Sky High project that should have been reported in 2020. But it was reported in 21. So we moved it back so that it was properly in the proper period. Okay, so that kind of covers the footnotes. Everybody still with me? Okay, good. So then we get to the required supplementary information. And basically what this is, this is your general fund and your one cent sales tax fund budgets. Because they're two of the major programs or major funds. And then some FPPA pension schedules that are required by the accounting standards. And so, you know, as we go, as one thing from the audit standpoint, we look at all your budgets to see, one, are you, have you spent within what was budgeted or expected to be spent? Because that's a state statute, that you're not allowed to overspend your budget. And so I know you guys made some amendments in order to properly reflect these additional expenditures in some of the funds. So you know, that's a good thing to not have to disclose anything about you guys overspending any of your funds. So I think in the past, we'd had a couple of times that we had to put that comment in just because of timing of things that had happened. But that's a good thing. So keeps a state auditor from sending you a nasty letter. So that's nice. Pages 46 and 47, if you'll scroll down. Keep going. You're almost there. Okay. Right. This is, you know, I talked about those non-major funds. These are your non-major funds, Conservation Trust, Urban Renewal, Kids Connection and your grants funds. Again, we show this combining of this information to carry forward to page three. And then if you scroll down one more page, this here is basically the income statement that carries forward to page six. And so anyway, that's the total column over here, is what you'll see on those front pages. And then following on pages 48 to 55, these are the rest of your budgetary comparison schedules for all your funds. That decides the general fund and the sales tax fund. Okay? Or the one cent sales tax fund. So again, we look at these each year to make sure you're compliant with statute. And then the last two pages, pages 56 and 57, is the local highway finance report. Again, these are because you guys received the highway users tax fund monies. You're required to put this report in there basically to say how you're spending the money. And so again, that's actually a required statute. We auditors, this is another, not one of our favorite things. Because every city calculates it different. So there's no consistency. So. But anyway, it's in there. And we do look at the numbers, how they're calculated and how it's reported. So that takes care of the financial statements. Any questions?
I'd be amiss if I didn't ask something.
I wondered if you'd come up with something to ask?
Yeah, I did. Of course I do. I always have something to ask on financial statements, right? Did I understand correctly, there's like a jillion numbers that go flying by. Did I understand correctly that the net income of the city, independent of Sky High contributions and ARPA money contributions, was 1.2 million? And if not...
Can we go back to that page? No.
And if not, what was the net income pulling those out?
Yeah, so if we look on page five, I don't know if that's the page you're looking at there. But on page five, so your net income overall was 1.2 million. And if we were to pull out the Sky High project that is in the capital projects fund, which is that third column there, basically you're still like right around 1.1 million for all the funds. Your general fund had a net income of 717,000. So the biggest piece of that net income is 717,000.
Which would have been...
Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so then the other document that was in your packet is what I refer to as a management letter. And so our professional standards as independent auditors require us to communicate certain things to you, the governing board or body of the city. And so the first part of this letter talks about my responsibilities under the auditing standards. And then, you know, there's other things in here. This is a letter that if you had huge changes in like accounting estimates, such as depreciation, if there were big changes in accounting policies, which there were none for 21, significant audit adjustments, we did make some audit adjustments at the year end. And so each year we look at those adjustments. And the audit adjustments were not significant enough for us to change our opinion on the financial statements. So that's good. And what that tells you, as a counsel, that tells you that most of the numbers you have seen throughout the year that have been provided in the packets is what you're seeing in this final audited document. Okay? You know, if there were consultations with other independent accounts, as far as we know, there were none. And then, you know, if we had any difficulties or issues while performing the audit, well, if we did, you would have heard from me before tonight. So that's a good thing. And you know, the other thing that this letter is useful is if there's areas for, you know, that we've come across during audit that we recommend improvement on or best practices type stuff, then that's what we put in this letter. And you know, to show that there's nothing here, what that tells you as a city council, that tells you that policies and procedures that have been put in place over the years and currently are being followed by city staff. That also tells you that you have, you know, these policies and procedures in place that allow for good, sound financial reporting for the municipality. So that's good. Okay? Because I know in my early years, we got quite a few comments that we made of things that needed to be changed. And they were. So that's a good thing. Okay? And then finally, I want to thank Anita, Gigi, Rob, Yunita and the staff of the city. You know, they had the hard part in all this process. Because they, especially this being your transition year. Anita, I really appreciate, you know, you come in and we didn't have many issues. We were able to get through things. So I appreciate your help. Because that made our job a lot easier as far as getting through everything. And that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going with Anita?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So I also want to thank Kyle and his team for what they've done and the work. And appreciate working with you and getting to know you a little bit. And Anita, you know, rock star coming in the middle of somebody else's work and somebody else's record keeping and pulling it all together. So there were days when her hair was on fire, but she always kept it cool. So thank you, Anita.
That's awesome. Thank you.
We try to take it easy, your honors. She may have different thoughts, but anyway, so yeah. All right. Thank you. See you next year.
Yeah. Thank you for coming, driving and doing it in person too. Yeah, thank you for coming, driving and doing it in person, too.
Oh, this is part of mine. All right, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You will need, you will need a vote on accepting the twenty twenty-one audit.
Okay. So I need a motion to second-
Make a motion to accept the twenty twenty-one audit.
Seconded. It moved in seconded to accept the twenty twenty-one audit. Is there any more discussion?
Anita?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sizala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the twenty twenty-one audit.
Discussion on a temporary moratorium on murals recommended by Planning and Zoning. Is this your presentation?
I'm sure. I will wing it. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, it, it's been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Committee that you place some sort of a moratorium on the murals that are taking place around town. They are recommending a six-month moratorium. They believe that this needs to be in place for the purpose of, of making sure that in the freedom of expressing one's speech, that it is appropriate for our city. And that's pretty much what it is. My recommendation is, if you want to consider something, that you look at a shorter timeframe. The chairman of Planning and Zoning, Ms. Spears, Sears, excuse me, contacted me again today, and she said, you know, they don't want to dampen any of the spirit of what's going on, but they are just concerned of what could appear. I've, they want to go forth with the recommendation of, of those that I've already approved, which right now, they're, they're doing one behind the old, the facet building on the, the wall. That wall is owned by Jenna Ford, she gave her approval to do that. So there's going to be a really, something similar to what's on the front page of this little newspaper I gave you in celebration of Stampede and what that means to Montevista. We potentially have another location, they haven't got full approval yet, but I've seen what they want to paint, and it's quite lovely. And it's a, it's a Hispanic woman with lots of beautiful flowers and bees, and it's really cheerful and bright. And then we had a, a business that's coming to town that is in the old Sears Building, where we're to the west of-
Stars.
Stars on Second Avenue. What they've proposed is actually out of compliance, but I've said, nope, let's go forward and, and go ahead and use that. So, in the spirit of the Planning and Zoning Committee, they're, they're not trying to overrule or over-regulate or overly make this complicated. They're just trying to say, can we put a few parameters on this? It says that somebody or some group or something gets to look at what's being proposed before. It's just up there painted. I don't know, maybe we could defer to our new attorney on all of this as far as the, you know, what control do we have over commercial buildings or over residential buildings? You know, what, what is going to prevent somebody from drawing giant daisies on their garage door? If they wanted to do that? You know, how do we, how would we stop that if we didn't like it that they painted a giant swastika on it or something? So, that's kind of the predicament we're in. There's one more building that I, I'm sorry, I just now recall that we gave a thumbs up to, and that is down on Asequia.
It's the glamp ground for Kelly Wedge.
Thank you, for Kelly. Kelly's glamour, glam, glamping commercial RV park down there, and she wants to paint something like big daisies and make it bright and welcoming and colorful.
And that in county?
Well, excuse me, it might be in county.
Is that the male building or the big building right off the hill?
No, it's the one kind of right off the, well, just a little past the hill.
It's past.
You guys actually approved her RV park, it's the glamp, glamping grounds.
Yeah, just north of the, the highway, they're over there, Rio Grande County Road and Bridge Yard.
Okay.
Just north of that.
Does any of this fall under the sign code?
Yes and no. Like for the restaurant, that fell underneath the sign code as we interpret it. And, and Rob, you might have to help me remember. The sign code says you can't have more than one sign on your one building, and they've got the name of the building, the name of what their restaurant will be. And then it's a cute little toucan bird that's part of it down on the, the ground. And then they also have a, have signage on the east side of their building, and that's technically not in compliance.
So we asked them to kind of keep some of the sign code. The sign code only allows what's called one wall sign. But since their property has basically two sides of frontage, they have a front and they also have a side. They did do a good design, so we allowed them, and it's just paint, one wall sign that will protrude, and the rest of the signage is painted on the wall, and it's, fits the hundred and fifty square feet. So it says one sign not to exceed more than a hundred and fifty square foot. So we have it so that all three signs, including the exterior, keeps it down to a hundred and fifty square feet.
What's the current process, because you keep mentioning the fact that you're looking at the designs before they go up, familiarize me with the process that they go through when they want to do this?
So it was, Councilman Foster is kind of, kind of winging it, I'd say. We were first contacted actually by Councilwoman Locke, who said, I've got somebody that wants to paint something on the Elks Building, and what's the process? We're like, hmm, I don't know, it sounds like a great idea, let's do it. And, and she told the lady that she needed to come in and just at least let me look at the picture and say yea or nay. There's also, if it was a sign, there's a ten dollar sign fee, application fee. And so, on this particular one, probably all rules were broken. I never actually did see it before it got painted and put up there, and there was no application fee. So, we told her that, and so then it's the same woman who's bringing forth the idea of the Stampede wall that's going to go up. She has found outside, she paid for the first one at the Elks. She's found outside funders to pay for this second one. And then I've contacted a funder for the third one. Kelly will be paying for her own. And the artist is out up Dale Nord.
Okay, so it sounds like P and Z is, and I, I don't know if you're at the meeting, so I don't know if you can speak to that, I don't know if, if Mr. Farish was or not. They're looking for maybe a structure in terms of how we handle this situation? Since, as you said, we're kind of in, in the dark at this point? Is that what P and Z is looking for, or are they just? Were you at the, you were at the meeting, weren't you?
I was, if you want me to address that briefly. What we've got to be careful of here in regard to murals, murals are a form of speech, First Amendment. I sent everybody an entire chapter out of the ABA publication on First Amendment speech and murals, basically, that I think everybody has by now. Rob made a very good point at P and Z that, you know, when we're all in concert together and we see these murals going up and everybody's really in approval of that, they're great. They add a lot of color to the town, a lot of character, all of that. What we get into is when somebody wants to put up a mural that, let's say it has political overtones to it, it has questionable, maybe not obscenity or anything like that, but borderline, where do we draw the line? So, I think the context of what we're going to do really requires an understanding of the parameters that we're dealing with for free speech and so forth. Last thing we want is constitutional challenges that we've got to address in this kind of thing. So I think the, and I appreciate what Gigi is saying of, you know, maybe shortening this period a little bit, because otherwise, you know, we're going to be into the late fall or something like that before people could start painting again, when it's really kind of too late to start painting. So perhaps a, a shorter period, maybe at least three months, so that we can look at all this and determine some rules that have been upheld as constitutional as we proceed forward with the whole mural question. So, I think, I think these comments are well taken, and it is a, it, it's an interesting ground because it's art, really, that you're talking about. And it does require some framework, an legal framework for them to proceed, and we can start working on that, and we do have some good source materials for that. I don't know whether that's helpful or not.
Good, thank you.
I appreciate what you have to say, when I saw this on the agenda, not that I'm an attorney or can understand any of this, but I found exactly what you just said is that it's unconstitutional to stop someone's freedom of speech unless it has political leanings, so like the swastika, that would be political. So that would be an easy thing to say no to. Anything, any sort of hateful time of things like that are political, so they'd be easy to, it would be easy to say no. Signs and murals, from my understanding of what I've read, are not the same. Signs pertain to guiding someone to a commercial business. Murals are a work of art. So for, let's just say, for example, we took a building, well, we already did, and welcome to Montevista. We're not, the artist is not directing anyone to a commercial business. However, if we made a mon, a mural, and I'll use my business as an example, if we wanted to take one of the buildings, let's say the Grand Avenue Building, that's a mechanic shop now, and that's coming right into Montevista. If I wanted to commission an artist to make, make a big mural about, you know, visiting Comshak, that can't, I can't do that, because that's directing to someone to a commercial business. So that's not necessarily an artistic mural. The artistic murals, and I agree there should be some guidelines, but I think we're making this harder than it needs to be. We don't need to wait three months or even two months. I do believe that by the next meeting, we have a competent enough city staff to put things like, we don't want swastikas, we don't want pot leaves, we don't want, you know, whatever it is we don't want. Y'all know what we don't want. It doesn't have to be that hard. This is something that, I've been out in the community, I've been listening to people, I've been watching Facebook, I've been talking to people, and, you know, we've had some pretty negative stuff in the past month. I don't even want to bring it up. But we've got some people getting happy and having some pride in their community. Which leads to another economic development question, which is, from, from a lot of the economic development articles and research I've done, community is individuals. We use the word community and we lump us all together. But community is actually individual faces, my face, your face, your face, your face. That's our community. Are those faces happy? Do they have pride in their community? Because when we raise community pride, we raise the inevitability that we're going to experience some economic growth. So I really just, I, from my, as, as a voice of one of five, I don't want to see any moratorium at all. I would rather see at our next meeting, a list of, of guidelines. You know, and if God can do it in ten, we can do it in ten. There's ten guidelines. The murals can't be naked, can't be pot leaves, can't be swastikas, can't be insulting, you know, I'm just pulling stuff out of my head here. But we've got something going on great that is, is making people happy. If we want to go after things that are not good, let's go after some of these really ugly signs, and I'm not going to call out the businesses that have them. But there are some really ugly signs, so if we're going to be dealing with something, let's deal with, you know, a different fish. I don't think that the moral, the, the mural is a fish we need to fry right now. It's a good thing, it's a happy thing, it's an uplifting thing. Let's fry some of these things that, some of these fish that are bad, ugly signs, ugly storefronts. Keeping in mind that many business owners are doing the best they can, but let's maybe help them. Find ways to help.
I think the, I think the murals are a great idea, you know, like, if you think about all the vandalism that's went down and all the spray painting and the game symbols and signs and everything that's put out in the public view, what I mean, and it's like, they're not asking anybody. What I mean, they're not asking anybody, they're just doing it. I don't care whose business that is or whose building that is, just go and spray paint on it. You know, and, and that tears apart the city, it makes people think, have a perception towards it. You know, like, even before this first mural went up, I was thinking about murals for the past five years. I mean, I'm like, man, that'd be so awesome. I go through cities and I'm like, check that out, man, that's pretty cool, check that out, that's pretty awesome. You know, and, and, you know, I, I, I was talking to Martha today, actually, because she went in and saw the doctor, but I'm like, you know, couldn't there be like, instead of, you know, like the, the, this trying to regulate what people are putting on their buildings or putting out on a mural, or, you know, it's like, let's regulate you, I want to know exactly what you're doing. I'm like, I just don't like that, you know what I mean, personally? But, like, what, what about some of the businesses in town that have paint that's over five years old or six years old, or it's ten years old? Or like this building that's been white since I was born? What I mean, like, like can there, can, can we do something about some of the buildings in town? Like the one right next to Dairy Queen and say, hey, can you guys paint your building? Because like I was telling Martha, and forgive me, but it looks like a peed mattress. Know what I mean, it's like ugly, the color, the, everything, I'm like, how come we can't like, like, be like, hey, can you have some, like paint that's five years or newer? Or, or I don't know, just something to make the town look more pretty, more acceptable, beautiful to the, to the eye, you know, because perception is one hundred percent true in the eye of the beholder, what I mean? So, it might not look like that, but because he thinks that, it's true to him. Know what I mean, so like, I don't, I don't want to regulate people on what they want to put up, you know? Of course, if, you know, like, I, I honestly don't think somebody's going to be like, oh, let me go put a, a swastika over there, right in the middle of everything, you know? But hey, maybe there might be, but in all honesty, like you look at the people that we have in Montevista, and most of them are upright citizens, right? The people that are not are the ones that are spray painting in the alleys and on businesses and doing stuff like that in the dark, know what I mean? We have a beautiful town, you know, like- we have a beautiful town, you know, like, I think murals will accent that, you know, and make it better. You know, make, make it, uh, more pleasant to the eye. You know, so I, I'm all for the murals and I really don't wanna put a regulation on what people can put up because if people are gonna put up a nice mural, they're not gonna put up something ugly, I think.
Well, and the building that you're talking about and the building that I pulled out of the air as an example, yours is the, the building you're talking about is coming up by Dairy Queen. It's the first building people see when they come in from the highway. The building I was talking about is the first building people see, big, big blank building people see when they're coming in from the Alamosa direction. And they're both ugly. They're just both ugly. So not only am I so in favor of these murals and so anti-moratorium of any sort, yes, I understand the need for some guidelines, some. But I actually had thought about bringing it up to the city as, you know, could we sponsor, could the city sponsor a mural on one of those two buildings? So that as people come in, they see, welcome to Montevista. That's not directing them or anywhere they're already here. Say in Montevista.
Like, so, just me personally, like, like, I, I used to be one of those people that would go and spray paint on somebody else's property. Know what I mean? When I was a teenager and I did a lot of bad things. And I shared with everybody when I was campaigning. Know what I mean? But, uh, I've turned around. There's been places where I went through town and I've seen pla- seen murals and I'm like, hold on. Let me go turn around, let me go and check that out. Know what I mean? Like, I wanna see that, you know, and, and not always, but say sometimes that turns into, oh, let's might as well get an ice cream. Or, hey, let's stop at the park real quick. You know, just gives the whole town a different feel. So, I'm all for it.
Why don't I start right now and have Victor not feel?
I would say that if moratorium was in place, it would be very short, thirty, thirty days, sixty days maximum. And that if we need go with policies and procedures to get that done, then it needs to be done promptly. Because I don't wanna say it's stopped.
I appreciate Locke's, uh, Councilor Locke's comment about the fact that a community is a group of people, which is very true. You'd started that one discussion and about that, the post you'd sent around, and I liked that. Um, it, I agree that we need a formalized process. I agree that we probably need some guidelines. Um, this is not a mural a day. We are not getting requests every day to do a new mural. It might be fun if we did. But realistically, we're not. I mean, what is it? One a month, one every two weeks, maybe? Um, I don't see that we need to totally stop this in its tracks because of the fact that we are not talking about a huge number here.
And there's not a lot of places to put them, but there's a few places. That would be awesome.
Um, I, I'm all for that we need to formalize a process. I'm all for that we need to put some guidelines in place to keep us in compliance. Um, I think that we can do that while this continues to run because you'll probably only have one or two more across your, you probably only have, what, one across your desk in the next thirty days?
Well, and, and they're expensive. You know, the, these, this artist just doesn't go out and do it from the kindness of his heart. He's trying to make a living as well. And so for the person, you know, so there is an investment in it. And so just not anybody is going to go paint something. Um, you've all seen the residents on First Avenue and the gentleman that has painted his fence. Well, he wants to do more than that and continue something. We haven't seen what it is, but it's lovely and, um,
Those little flowers.
And it's his fence.
When I seen it, I was like.
It's his fence and his yard and let him have it.
He's on PNC.
We can regulate people to death. I mean, and, and we can make, we could make our town very unwelcoming or we can make it very welcoming. And uh, that's to visitors as well as businesses. I kinda think we need to lean toward the welcoming sign. Instead of making things harder for people who wanna do good things, let's make it easier for them to do good things. And let's go after the really ugly stuff.
I've already, well, when I first came on board back in December, I got ahold of the workforce center. And I said, come on, you guys, your signs are really bad and faded and unless there's a car there, they're, it looks abandoned. And I said, it's right on the corner where we're gonna have a brand new sky high building. I said, can you please update, change color your sign? And, um, they're working on it. I'm hoping it's done by stampede, but.
And there are some business owners on, uh, on Adams Street that have.
Horrible ones. No, there's, it's an off, it's an active office. They got pretty quiet during COVID and were working from home, but it's a state office.
Wow.
So would Jean, would we be fine to, in your professional opinion, to just roll what we're doing and then work on the plant procedures, planning and zoning, can we work on the procedures and we just carry on?
I think right now, you probably are okay with that. I, um, I think what I'm hearing is that all this is really laudable too, to, to go forward with murals. Um, we will try to gear up pretty fast for something. I, I want this to pass First Amendment challenges, uh, that are possible. I want everybody to understand that because every time you try to do something good, there's always somebody who wants to come in and challenge that whole thing. And, uh, with something that might be unacceptable to you. So, uh, we will work as quickly as possible in trying to get an acceptable set of, uh, guidelines. I assume, are you going to have any type of committee review of these, uh, murals before people start putting up?
I wouldn't say no. Just cause that's like another step in the process.
Just to be the voice on the other side though. And I, I, I agree we should allow free speech. But you're complaining now about ugly buildings and the first mural that somebody doesn't pay money for, that I go out and do, it's not gonna be pretty. And you're not gonna be happy. So we need.
I don't know, there are some buildings, I think, I don't think you could hurt them no matter what you did.
You're, you're making comments that you see some buildings are ugly. You will think some murals are ugly as well.
Well, that's true.
We most likely, we're not the first ones to deal with this. I'm sure there's a code out there that will pass muster that could be done pretty quickly.
Absolutely.
So that we can move forward with this without a moratorium. But to say, let's just do it and have unfettered access to this, at some point you will be the one in here complaining, that is the ugliest thing. And that's the first people's, when they drive in, it's this ugly thing that Jason painted on the side of.
Well, I did say there needed to be some, you know, some guidelines. I, I did say, you know, maybe a checklist of it's got to be this or not be that or, you know, what, so that, yeah, I agree with having some guidelines, but I don't think that it would take so long that a moratorium is called for.
We're not the first to deal with this, actually. I'm sure.
And, and you're right. There, there are pieces of art that other people just love and I look at them and go, ew. However, it doesn't matter whether I like it or not. It matters whether the citizens of this town have pride in their town. That's what matters. That's what it comes down to.
I, I'm a car guy. Know what I mean? So like, when I see other cars, I'm like, ooh, check that out.
Uh huh.
Ooh, check it out. And there's cars that I don't like and I'm like, yeah, cool, man, like, that's, that's all good because that's them, you know? And I, I appreciate it all regardless.
Jean, you had something? Yes, sir. Uh, I will go ahead and send the council the same thing that I sent the planning commission. I think you'll be able to see what the framework is in there. So we can develop something fairly quickly. I think it will pass muster.
Awesome.
Awesome.
I know that our current sign ordinance requires, uh, I believe the city manager to review the sign. I think that having a review, I don't think it needs to be a committee, but I think that it should be reviewed, um, before it hits that, before it hits the wall.
Yeah, I don't think we need another committee.
We have twenty pages of.
Of sign ordinance?
Of sign.
But those are signs.
Yes, but I, but still.
Which we determined are not murals.
But still, it's, it's cumbersome.
It is. And I agree, the sign ordinance needs to be
Simplified.
By a page. I mean, down to a page. But signs and murals are not the same thing. So the sign ordinance wouldn't, wouldn't pertain to the murals anyway.
We just need to.
There, there is a blending sometimes. All this is not black and white, unfortunately, between signs and murals because you can have a mural that is directing people towards something in, in some way and still be a mural.
Well, but that's a sign. A simple welcome to Montevista is not a sign. Cause like I said, it's not directing them anywhere. If they don't see it, they're already here.
I'm just saying there's some blends in here that you'd be hard for us to say, is this a sign or is this a? And one of the, one of the signs we got, I think it's still there in the post office, that mural. And it, it depicts actual characters in Montevista.
Isn't that Homer Right?
Who that is.
Wasn't it Homer Ri- it, isn't it Homer Right? Is that his name? Yeah. In the post office.
So Mr. Mayor, you will need to have a motion whether to approve or deny the recommendation from planning and zoning.
So let's go ahead.
I would move that we do not have a moratorium on murals, but that we do come up very quickly within a thirty day period of guidelines for murals in Montevista.
Second it. Have a motion and a second to um, not have a temporary moratorium on murals, but come up with guidelines for that. Any more discussion? Unita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Sibilla?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to deny the recommendation of the planning and zoning to place a moratorium on murals and to have a thirty day turnaround period for some sort of mural standards.
Thank you. Resolutions. Rob? Twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, establishing water restrictions?
Yes, sir. Thank you. In your packets, you have a few documents. I did put, because some of the council may not be aware, but um, quite a few years ago, we did a document to start looking at some of the drought conditions. And we put in, um, some triggers, triggering criteria for water restrictions. I won't read them all, but it kinda lists, um, the different levels. Um, we have enacted in years past a level one, um, mild drought conditions within the city. Um, to be perfectly honest, with current conditions, the way they are, we could probably look at doing something a little more stringent, like a level two. Um, but for tonight, just to establish some watering restrictions in town, I did just simply continue from twenty twenty-one and ask council to enact, um, level one mild drought condition, um, restrictions within the city limits, which limits, um, residences to water, um, with even number addresses on Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, odd numbered addresses, um, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and watering on Sunday for everyone. So, um, there's a resolution, a little resolution, um, twenty twenty-two dash zero seven that says that, um, council will be enacting level one watering restrictions. Um, and it just basically re, redoes the resolution zero seven twenty twenty-one and it continues it into twenty twenty-two. So I'll open that up for any discussion at this point.
From what date to what date?
It would be from June second tonight through October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. So from now until October sixteenth.
I would move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, uh, resolution establishing watering restrictions.
Been moved in second to approve resolution two zero two two dash zero seven for water restrictions from the city of Montevista. Is there any more discussion?
Are people still able to submit an, uh, application for like gardening and new grass?
Yes. So the exemption still holds in, in a level one drought, yes.
Unita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Sibilla?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, establishing watering restrictions on sprinkler systems and lawn irrigation.
Thank you. And this can go out on city page and will it be mailed out to, um, we can put it on the water bills as well.
That's on the one going out tomorrow?
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Okay, city attorney contract.
Okay, you guys have all, excuse me, council all has the, the contract in front of you. It outlines our expectations of the city attorney. I want to first welcome Mr. Farish to being the city attorney and, and, um, as we move forward. So it states that he needs to attend meetings, provide legal advice, he'll do phone consultations, he'll monitor legislation, he'll supervise any outside legal services. Um, so kind of highlights, it's a two-year contract and it is at a flat salary of forty thousand per year. Now, I was alerted yesterday that Mr. Farish possibly would like that increased. There hasn't been an increase on this contract for the last six or seven years, so I understand it. And his recommendation was forty-eight thousand a year. So I think that if there's any direct questions about the contract, we need to ask Mr. Farish and not let me be the middleman.
What made you choose eight thousand?
It was my understanding, um, counselor, that, um, the present salary was four thousand a month and I guess that wasn't the case. Um, so I said I would do it for the same amount. Um, I see a, a lot of work that we've got to do, frankly. Uh, and, uh, it's gonna require, uh, myself and of course I'm gonna be helped by Seth, uh, getting all this done.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I couldn't hear that last.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I said, it, it's gonna require a lot of work and I will be helped by Seth, uh, who's in my office and president here at the same time. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm going to, I'm gonna do the job regardless of what you set it at, of course. So, uh, I, I would ask that you consider that amount, uh, and I think it's probably fair.
Well, I just calculated it out. It comes out to six hundred sixty-six dollars a month and sixty-six cents. That's a little spooky to me, but that's, that's beside the point.
Forty-eight thousand, not eight thousand?
As, as far as the difference.
Oh, I'm sorry, the difference, okay.
Yeah, the, the, the difference. Um.
I'm sorry.
In the attorney world, that's not a whole lot of money.
No.
I mean, it's not, it's not make or break your money. Um, however, eight thousand to the city, there's some other projects we could do with that. I'm not saying no, I'm just arguing with you. I mean, perfectly honest. Cause we're, we're talking about. Because we're talking about eight thousand dollars. Now, other people on this board have seen your work. I haven't. I haven't. So I have a hard time being in favor of a raise when I haven't seen what you're capable of yet. Does that make sense? And I don't mean that to be insulting. I know that you're a perfectly capable attorney, or you wouldn't be as successful as you are. However, I haven't seen eight thousand dollars worth of extra good.
Is there somehow that we can do like a review in a short time?
You know, there's an idea.
You know?
I'm at your mercy on all this.
We can do it, really.
I'm kind of like that too, because it's public information, so.
Sure.
If it was mistaken by not looking. But that'd be like me hiring somebody today and then starting tomorrow and telling me, oh, by the way, I want this, or I'm not going to do this, or I want this, or it's like, wait a minute. Okay, well, different, totally different. Because I don't deny that you can't do that, but I feel like, one, it's like that proving point, right? And some of us have seen your work and we know forms about that at all. But let's take this little step into this. So do a review. Add to that, because we still, as we said and talked about budget, we still have to be concerned with that hit and budget when we're planning on it. If I'm correct. And then my only other question to that is when you called Yunita and asked her, told us, tell me her about that instead of calling Gigi or us. That would be my only concern, G. So my opinion is one of five. We need to work toward it, not just do it at fun.
I like Victor's idea of a review at a certain point. I suppose we need to decide what that point is.
All six months, we examine, and perhaps about the end of the year when we do evaluations. Probably need to do it before then, though, with the budget for next year. Yeah, we start in October. Yeah, so we have to do it, we'd have to do it before October.
I have ninety days.
Three months.
It's on. So is everybody okay?
Give us feedback then, what time, yeah, what time it's taken so far? September?
Second meeting in September?
Yeah, we can do the evaluation and we can evaluate through there, because we know there's a lot to do.
Yeah.
You yourself have said what needs to be done, so. Probably need a work session to discuss it beforehand. Yeah, it's been the second meeting, so we'll plan a work session in September. So we'd like for you to sign the contract tonight. Whatever your decision is, we'll sign it. Take a motion to approve the contract as written with a review done in September.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract as written and have an evaluation in September. Is there any more discussion? Yunita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion to approve the city attorney's contract as written with a review in September.
All right. Staff proposals, reports in action, city clerk, Yunita?
She's not home. Her name would be real big right there in highlight, because I've already. I've not talked about the financials enough. Always flip, like fourteen times to make sure her name is on here.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a few things I wanted to go over with you this evening. We're extremely busy in the clerk's office. We have liquor license renewals coming our way, business license, and then a lot of vendor's permits with the events that are coming up throughout the summer. I know she's not here tonight, she's on vacation, but I really want to give a huge thank you to Lorna. She is my assistant, and she's doing an absolutely amazing job. And she is always willing to help out with other departments as they ask. So I just wanted you all to know that she's doing a great job, and I thank her very much for that. Municipal court has been busy. We have a lot of useful public service hours that have been brought in in the last couple of weeks. So that's really nice to see that the defendants who come in and who get the useful public service are actually doing it. And we're able to verify that that work has been done. We have some of the kids who are doing some useful public service out at Sky High. So it's good to see that they're, they're doing what they're told that they need to be doing to clear their court case. Planning and zoning commission is working on short term rentals and the sign code and the mural code. They will have a work session on June the twentieth. Other news for the city is I would like to remind everybody in the city that you need to register your dog. Last year, we had two hundred and twenty eight dogs registered by this time of the year. This year, I have forty eight. So we just put out a press release about registering your dog and also keeping them safe. So hopefully, people will start coming in and getting their dogs registered. There are penalties, and you can be fined for not having your dogs licensed within the city limits. The first penalty is a twenty five dollar charge. Second penalty is fifty, and the third is a hundred dollars. So I'd just like to encourage the citizens to please come in and get your dogs licensed. It also helps that if your dog gets out of the yard and runs away, we can help you locate that dog, or if that dog gets picked up, they can call and say, hey, this is the tag number. And we can call the owner to find the animal's home. I also want to remind the citizens that all businesses must be licensed. That includes home based businesses as well. You can get the application online at the city of Montevista's website. You can also contact our office at any time for that application. But all businesses have to be licensed within the city of Montevista. So I'm trying really hard to get all five of your commitments to this next project. CML is offering on June eighth and June fifteenth a one hour class from twelve to one. That class is going over resilient leadership. Colorado has recently experienced more intense and frequent disasters. This trends to expedite to continue in our communities, and we are not fully prepared. This class will help you prepare and help discuss on how communities can plan and recover from disasters. So.
Where is this app?
So it's online. So it's June eighth and June fifteenth from twelve to one. It is just an online webinar. If you all are interested, I will register you and send you the link.
So it's June eighth or June fifteenth?
No, there's two classes.
Two classes, okay.
So June eighth and June fifteenth, and it's a one hour webinar.
You can register me, and if I have something else, another commitment either of those days, I'll change that.
Okay.
It's through the lunch hour, I could probably.
Eighteenth or fifteenth?
Please.
You can put me down to.
Because what it says here in this, what you just read, there's nothing that can prepare you for a disaster.
No, but if other communities, if we all work together and feed off of each other, we can hopefully devise a better solution to help the victims of fires to better recover.
We can be prepared for the tangible and pragmatic, but we, you're right, there's no way to prepare for the emotional. There just isn't.
Okay. Yeah.
So if I may follow up with Nita. Do you guys get those emails, or do you pay any attention to them, or do we need to bring them up and remind you?
The online webinar?
The CML?
I see them, I just really don't do it often.
I don't think I got this one. I don't think that I got that. I do get some CML stuff from time to time. I get a lot more from that next move group that I don't know who they are. But anyway, I don't know that I'm getting them all. I do know that I am getting some.
Okay, so we will bring them up to your attention.
Okay.
And, and we, we, the city, is the sponsor of the fall meeting for our district, and that's in September.
Am I still in charge of entertainment?
What's up?
No.
You're in charge of entertainment. You're not in charge of entertainment.
You put me in charge of entertainment.
No, I did not. You volunteered.
Bring your banjo.
I got that. So, and that's September, right?
September twentieth, and I actually been working on that this week. I think Gigi and I have a pretty good game plan together.
September twentieth?
That'll be submitted to CML before the end of June. So, but I just would, I think that that CML webinar would be a benefit to council.
We will not do that out here.
Okay. Do I have all of your commitments?
I'm unavailable on this first one.
Yeah.
I'll put you back.
I can't change.
Yeah, you'll be out of here.
Okay. Couple other things, on June fourth at Faith Hinckley Memorial Park, you all have been invited to military send off at eleven AM. There are two recruits.
June fourth?
June fourth.
Yeah, this Saturday. At eleven?
At eleven. June ninth at ten thirty, ten thirty five at Ninth and Tyndall Street. You're all invited to the CRHDC ribbon cutting ceremony to celebrate the opening of the Tierra del Sol Estates Phase Two. And then one last date, CML annual conference is June twenty first to the twenty fourth. Victor is the only one signed up to go to that right now. If you are interested, I have until the tenth to sign you up to go to that CML conference.
That's in Breckenridge, right?
That is in Breckenridge.
And I'm going, I'll be there, Victor as well.
So will I.
So will Jean.
You going, Jason? I know, there's one. I know what happened right now.
Do the CML, do they video any of their stuff? That maybe sometimes, so those of us that can't make it can watch it later? No. No? I don't know. Okay.
I don't think they video, but they do give you the materials, the written materials and the outlines and the slides. You can access those, and if you have any trouble doing that, we access them for you.
Okay. That's helpful. I appreciate that.
So if you have no questions, that's it?
Thank you, Yunita.
Thank you.
Public Works, Mr. Als.
One more.
So I gave you a written report, I'll kind of go through it real quick. Summer's here, and unfortunately, we really aren't ready for it. So we've experienced several issues with our parks. We're working diligently to try to get those done and fixed. A lot of our lines are broken, and we're finding that a lot of our solenoids and stuff aren't working. So sprinklers aren't coming on when they're supposed to. So we've got a lot of brown spots showing out there. We're replacing as many as we can. Unfortunately, time is hitting us as well. A lot of our solenoids are so old, they can't find them. So we're having to replace the entire valve assembly. It's gotten so bad that we've actually contracted with Holman Irrigation to come in and give us some professional assistance to try to get things up and moving again. So we'll be seeing that. They've been doing a few of the parks. I think today, we finally got Chapman Park up and running, so it's going. We've replaced approximately a hundred and sixty foot of pipe that had broke and collapsed. So I think we have that one running now. And the utilities, we're almost back up to fully staffed. On April, we took a pretty huge hit to our wastewater division. We have three employees, one of which is the supervisor there, and we lost two of them. So we were fortunate that Danny, who worked over at Sky High, was able to move over, and he's now with our wastewater folks. Andrew Valenzuela, one of our long term, thirty year employees, stepped up and he moved over to the plant to kind of help us out in the interim until we get everybody trained. So I'd like to give a huge shout out to him and all the help that he's been doing for us. We've had a few leaks coming out of the winter, just really curb stops that are leaking. So the guys have been digging a few curb stops. We did put in a budget to purchase a new mini excavator and a compact roller. For the last two weeks, we've had the mini excavator in town, and we've been doing some work. We've been out at the ballparks, Chapman Park. We've done two curb stops with it, just let the guys kind of see what size, if that's really the machine they want, if we need a bigger one, so. And working to try to get a compact roller down here too, to help us out with some of our patches and blade patches and stuff. The SEP is, in the report, I said there wasn't any movement. We did get an email today, so we're back on negotiations and working on that. I don't know, maybe Gigi and her report might go a little more, but there's really not a whole lot to report on that. We did start spraying mosquitoes on May twelfth, and it's moving along fairly well. We still have a few citizens that are coming in, one or two a week, asking not to be placed on the do not spray list, so that list is steadily growing.
Is that a little piece of paper?
Yeah, there's these little signs that say do not spray.
Yeah, I seen it when I was walking, I was like.
Yeah, that was part of our educational thing that we talked about, to try to help the citizens and to make sure our drivers, when they're out at eight o'clock to one o'clock in the morning, be able to see, hey, I'm coming up to a house that doesn't want to spray, and so we could turn it off. Just to try to do a better service to our citizens. So we've got those out. We're, like I said, weekly, we're adding at least one so far every week. This week was three, so we're adding to that list pretty much every week, so. Might be something that council one time might need to consider right now. I think we're fine just doing what we're doing, it seems to be working with the new hires. We're training a brand new series of guys doing the spraying, so the signs are helping with that, so. We are already starting to work towards stampede. We're a little behind. I had a crew meeting today, and instead of kind of waiting until the end, we're, we've kind of assigned that anytime anybody throughout the entire Public Works crew has any downtime, that they're supposed to start working on some of the stampede stuff. Cleaning up weeds, doing some stuff, so we're not right, you know, two weeks before the event just rushing and trying to get everything done, so. So trying to do a little more proactive with that. You were briefed last meeting on the multimodal grant from CDOT. We're still waiting on the paperwork so we can start design, but that was a one point, or one point eight million dollar award. And that'll do some really good things to see a completion of what CDOT's currently doing in our town. So all those new curb ramps that they're putting in, we'll be able to add sidewalks and curb and gutter to that too. So that'll be a huge, huge deal for us. Highway one sixty project is moving nicely. They're looking at the week of June thirteenth through the fifteenth to close the highway to do the railroad crossing replacement. So that's been moved to June thirteenth through the fifteenth. One sixty will be closed, and they will do a detour around. One sixty will be closed, and they will do a detour around using Sixth Avenue on that. So Sixth Avenue back over to fifteen and then back up. So hopefully it shouldn't last more than three days. Other good news, that's not in my report. Cooley, um, came in last week, last Friday, and they started doing the property cleanups. They're continuing all week this week, and they've got the large majority of the three properties that were completely damaged, um, from the fire. The large majority of that property, those three properties have been cleaned up. If you drive by there, you'll see a considerable change from what it was after the fire. So we are moving forward. And I would like to thank Gigi and council for you guys' support to let us do that cleanup, because that's really not a city's obligation to do. But I think, in, you know, just listening to council's discussion tonight, it just goes to show that you guys want us to continue to move forward, so I thank you for that. It is a cost, but I do, I do appreciate it. I think it will help our community heal and move forward. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Sixth Avenue, um, the road is pretty beat up.
The road is very beat up.
Any plans that, who, who's working on that, the county? Or?
No, so right now, we have a contractor, Excel is in, and they're replacing the gas main and the fiber optic line that runs along Sixth Avenue. So the fiber optic is, went in first, and then they came behind it, and they put the gas line in, a new gas main. And now they're in process of digging out all of that flow fill and starting to patch it back.
So, I'm just kind of curious, are they gonna, like?
It will be patched, it won't, they will not completely fix that street. It's still really rough, and it's going to be rough until we find the money to replace that thing. But it, it has a main trunk line on it, it also has water main on it, so it is a fairly detailed project. It'll be several million dollars to do that entire section of road.
Because it's a whole mile, Sixth Avenue. I was just thinking, because that road is so trash, I avoid it. I dent it two of my rims. I'm like, oh man, really? So I'm out there with the hammer. Terrible. I was just curious, like?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's still pretty bad, but, um, Excel needed to do that, those upgrades on the line. Those lines are really old, so, to, just to make sure we had good service.
Just wanted to know what's happening.
Yeah, well, if I can interrupt, I was trying to find it real quick in, in the audit. You know, we, in the past, there has not been very much money put into road maintenance. It all went to, okay, let's try and save potholes and snow removal. And so that little portion of the one cent is what, gets us about a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Yeah, well, a little more, about a hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Like a block?
Yeah.
Not even.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, the two things that, um, this council has done is you've increased our paving budget, which is in Fund eighty-four, if you ever want to look in the, the, the budget. Fund eighty-four, it used to be fifty thousand dollars. Twenty-five of that went to patch, and the other twenty-five thousand went to sand for the winter. Um, you've increased that from fifty to a hundred thousand, and then when the citizens have voted in the one cent sales tax, that produces roughly a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-three thousand this last year, which was what budgeted. So we are moving up. We have approximately two hundred thousand dollars from fifty, so huge increase, to work towards paving projects. And you have to remember that includes crack sealing and chip sealing and actual pavement. And then, you know, it doesn't make any sense for us to pave a street if the water in the sewer is still old and decrepit. I, I will guarantee you from experience that if we spend the money to overlay a street or tear out the asphalt and put new asphalt down without doing the work underground that nobody sees, that within that first year, you will cut that asphalt at least twice. And ruin what you've just spent lots and lots of money on, so. So we are moving there.
Another question, just, sorry. Um, the tennis court, I remember we were doing like a ceiling or something on a tennis court?
That got sealed, some of it. There were some cracks that developed through the winter after that was sealed. So there's some additional cracks that are on there, so.
Just kidding.
Yeah, so the, the tennis courts is one that we need to try to find a grant to redo.
The whole thing?
The base needs to be redone, because that's where those cracks are coming from. The freeze thaw cycles that we go through.
That was brought to my attention, to what I'll, I'll let you know. Pioneer Street, where it goes into that alley, drops off the pavement?
Yes. That's, um, Colette back here.
Yes, there is, it looks like phone lines down. They go across the road, they're in the Colette Street, the dirt park.
Uh-huh.
They go across the road and through somebody's driveway. And that person said it's his mom's place. He said, I called several people, acts like nobody cares. And I said, well, it's probably a phone line, and nobody has home phones anymore. That's what it looks like, laying across there, but it's completely across the road to the alley.
I will go check that out, and we will get somebody on that next week. So it's either cable or phone.
Yeah, it looked like phone to me, but.
Okay, so I, I have, I have some local contacts for a sentry link, so I can get ahold of them.
Well, I figured if it was cable, somebody'd be complaining about it, because I'm sure that cord's been run over.
Well, sometimes they just run those temporary across the ground like that, and that might be something they've done, and they haven't picked it up.
It, it looked like there was a hook on one end, so I made it wind it off, so pop it off. Okay.
Okay, I will take care of that.
Thank you, Rob.
Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you.
IT?
No, Police Department. Oh.
Oh, sit down, IT. You're giving your report.
So Chief Kingfeller, actually, did you record, and it's in front of all of you?
It's written here, but you can come read it.
Well Sergeant, Eugene was going, was in here and said he was going to present it for.
Sergeant?
Did he get caught away?
The schedule had slight modifications.
So Mr. Pino, why don't you go ahead and?
The notes on the back are mine, not Chief's, so please don't, don't go in there.
Okay, well, good evening, council. I'll just go bullet for bullet, not too sure. I'm still a patrol officer, nothing high up yet. Officer Brandon Sanchez graduated from the academy and became a certified officer. He's now in Phase One of FTO. He is currently with, he's now in Phase Two, actually, he's with Corporal Harford. We hired two additional officers, a Brittany Martinez. Brittany comes from the Alamo County Sheriff's Office. Uh, she has worked there for the past four years. Officer Daniel Golden, Daniel just graduated from the police academy. Uh, both Brittany and Daniel are completing their administrative week and will start FTO next week. FTO is a field training. It is a sixteen-week program where the, where the new officers work with the trainer and must meet, and must meet expectations and pass phases in order to become a fully certified officer. Uh, the detective process is complete, and the appointment will be announced next week. We have started working with, started working on operation plans for Sky High. Uh, June sixth, the Modest Police Department will host a first responder after action review of the Modest Fire. This is for responding agencies and entities to discuss the response to identify strengths and weaknesses. At the June sixteenth meeting, we will do ceremony, ceremonial swearing in for new officers. Ann Robinson, Brandon Sanchez, Brittany Martinez, and Daniel Golden. Uh, Chief is currently attending a Crime Victim Advisory Board meeting in Denver all day, uh, which is why he is unable to be at this meeting today. Very bottom says go abs.
I, I don't want to find out, he's at a hockey game right now.
We're talking about avalanches, this is June. Remember that, maybe. It'll be the non-sports person here.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Officer.
Thanks for being put on the spot and coming through.
Thank you for shining.
You did very well.
You know, I'm, I'm here to help you, my friend.
School's paying off.
Now the IT.
It's going down.
Look at him sitting back there like, dude, I don't have to do this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Where's this Pino quiet?
In typical IT fashion, we don't have very much to report, it's going to be quick and sweet. But we have new AT&amp;T access points put up throughout the building. That's providing better cell signal throughout the building. And that came to us from AT&amp;T at no cost. For our privileged accounts, so the admin accounts that me, Christian, is just, do run the city to install software, now have two factor, two factor authentication on them, which just better security makes it so that we're not as vulnerable as we were previously. We have completed our computer inventory, so every device that we've had throughout the city has been verified and has been verified that it's still here or it's been disposed of. We have audited our active directory, which is for our security. It allows us to get rid of old accounts, which is a security risk as if there's an old account that had access to something, say, something with the finance or something with the city manager, that just allows us to minimize any risk there. We have completed our lock audit, which is just getting rid of old accounts that had access to the locks here. So anyone that had a key card, a key fob or something that didn't, was no longer working here, was still active, has been taken out now. And then we have repurposed old computers to extend the PD's workforce. And those computers were repurposed at no cost to the city. And we're just continuing our available systems to give upon security. Any questions?
You guys do agree, Jill, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I have a question, but somebody else has it. I'm, I've heard, and, and I've experienced this too. Sometimes it's hard, especially when the room is full. I know it doesn't happen very often, but it does happen, will happen more often in the future. People have a hard, have a hard time hearing us. I had a hard time hearing Mr. Ferrish just a little while ago. Sometimes I have a hard time hearing our city manager or Nita. I know that these microphones feed into the recording device for legal purposes, I get that. Do they have the capability to enhance our voices as well, so the audience can hear us better?
I'm not sure if our current system does have that capability. I know we can play into the speakers here. However, that can cause a feedback loop, which can.
Right, we don't want to do that.
Yes.
Here he comes.
So, these are connected directly to these speakers behind you guys. The issue we run into, especially with how sound travels across this room, if we start to crank it up, it feeds back almost instantaneously. So we pretty much killed it purely to help out the recordings, that way we can at least hear what you guys are saying. Ultimately, what we need to do is completely revamp what we do have, and that ultimately just requires time and money. So it's in the works, just not something that we have immediately.
Right. Well, I know that, when I watch our YouTube videos, I mean, I can hear it if I turn my phone up.
Right, right, so.
But when I'm talking, look how far I am from the mic on the camera.
Right, so the mic on the camera is actually shut off for the exact same reason. Do you, were you watching videos, I'd say a couple months ago, maybe even half a year ago? Do you hear like this hissing sound in the background?
A little bit, it has gotten better.
So that is purely because of all the different systems that are tied together. We are just minimizing as many things as possible to try to remove that. It boils down to feedback from the speakers and the cables that are underneath your desk. They are not the greatest. So it, it's one of those, we need something a little more unified that's meant for that specific purpose. As these speakers up here are a portable system, they're usually set up for like concerts or events. They're not meant for a council room. The other big thing is, uh, there's no sound ending in this room. And the sound quality is better when this room is full. So if there's any other good reason to fill up this place, that is another thing that can be added to the list. But it's just, we, we're pushing what we do have here to its limits, and there's not a whole lot else I can dial in, because I've, I've messed with this, I've been very nervous about sound quality being terrible. And by this point, I think we've got it about as good as we're going to get it with what we've got.
Okay, well, thank you, that at least answered my question, that little, little time, little money can fix anything.
DOS would probably not know, as he hasn't had to fight a lot of the issues with this.
Right.
That being said, uh, with, with how things are going, with how we're set up, he's probably going to be getting more of the reports. A, because I can get out of them, and B, because I'm not always going to be here. That, and, uh, let's be honest, it was his first time, and he did it better than I normally do.
He did great?
Yeah.
And I appreciate you stepping in and answering.
Of course, I, I don't like being put on the spotlight, and I'm sure that's one of those situations where you don't know the answer to the question at all, and you kind of ask, kind of like, uh, okay, no, just went through.
That's honestly a question I've been meaning to ask for months and just kept forgetting. Tonight, I wrote it down, sorry, I remember.
I honestly have been waiting for it, because, uh, this is probably something. There are a lot of things within IT that if something were to happen, no one's really going to see it. We can fix problems, we can go through and, you know, fix our own mistakes as we move forward without really interfering with anyone else. This right here is public facing, and it's, you know, right in front of, right behind of you guys. So if anything goes wrong, not only do you guys see it, but everyone else sees it on YouTube. So this is one of those things that, uh, I've been most worried about in regards to this position, honestly.
Well, I know, I, I know the equipment exists, that, that it can be done, but it's not free.
Oh, yeah, the, uh, and that's it, exactly.
It's just not free.
The moment you start to mention this type of situation when it comes to audio, they seem to just start increasing the price just because they can, because there's not much else. The other big thing is, we're not audio engineers. Like, I, I know a little bit, I know the basics, but this is definitely not something I'm super knowledgeable in. So when it comes to this, I'm, we're, we're learning as we move forward, but I'm not a hundred percent certain, or, what's the word? I'm not sure what to look for as we design systems like this right here.
Give me, give me a call when you're ready to do it.
Well, I mean, you guys will probably know, because I'll be excited when the time comes.
We, we will hear you without a microphone, right?
I'm, I'm sure you will. Microphones were initially set up purely for you guys to, uh, have a recording. Especially for legality purposes, the camera was kind of just added on as a, a bonus. That way, people who couldn't make it here tonight would be able to watch it afterwards. And the, the big problem to this is we've just been like piling new things on top of old, and it doesn't really clash super well. We tried to bring this in so that we'd have sound for you Nita's can, or for her computer. That being said, it causes big problems with the microphones. We tried to integrate those, and I'm sure you remember those issues, or maybe it was before you guys actually joined council. But I know Dale will remember us having some feedback issues during meetings and us constantly having to run back and forth and adjust it. So it's just, it's one of those headache-y issues that IT has. That being said.
And it's an issue that money will fix.
Money, time, experience, I mean.
So, Councilwoman Locke, it's one of the, we do have bids, um, for improvements in the council chambers, as well as for the conference room. And, um, and that, we will, will want to be visiting with you all in regards to how we spend some of our American Rescue Funds, so.
Some of our what?
America Rescue Funds.
Okay. Cool. Oh, that's nice, I'm sorry. I brought a photocall there.
Thank you, guys.
Of course, sorry, this one went on, you know, quite a few minutes longer than normal.
Thank you, guys, you guys did a good job, thank you. Mr. Ferrish?
Mayor and members of the council, good to be home. I first want to thank the council for. I first want to thank the council for the appointment here. This was pretty emotional, really, for us. I went home and told everyone about this and she said, what? I said, yeah, it really happened. And so it's, it's pretty overwhelming to be back and to be sitting in that chair again after five and a half years. In that regard, I do want to say that I intend to be the attorney for the entire council. All of you. And the city attorney is the city's attorney through the elected members, who are you. So you are the one who calls the shots of what projects we're going to do and be involved with. And this council speaks with one voice when it makes a decision. And that is the decision of the council. And the other councilors are bound to support that decision regardless of whether they voted for that way or whether they didn't. So that's something I learned from Ferris Burbank years and years ago. And so, one of the reasons that I took this job was, I think, this is one of the best opportunities I have seen for this city to really go in years. I don't know of any other city in the state of Colorado that has a city manager who's been Secretary of State, State Senator, County Administrator, served on too many numerous committees to even mention, probably of state committees. A police chief who has been a major in the State Patrol. Has had numerous people under him. A city clerk who's experienced. A Public Works Director who knows the infrastructure of the city very, very well. And it's really an honor to be able to serve with all these people and really bring everybody, help bring everybody together into one focus. And probably the words that you're gonna hear from me a lot are vision and focus about what we're gonna try to get done. And I just am happy to be part of that. Since my appointment, well over a month ago, I've sat down with Gigi on a couple of occasions. George, I had a session in municipal court that I attended and sat down with Judge Zollers there. I've sat down with Nita several times. And just chatting about what your thoughts are about what to do. And I think what I picked up is, it's not a question of what to do. It's a question of what to do first. So there are a lot of things in the mill right now. I will be going to CML meeting incidentally also and picking up more information there. But absent any other directions from the council, here are some of the priorities that I see that I intend to work on. First of all, Nita's mentioned several times. I watched the videos of most of the council meetings up till about eight or nine months ago when I got too busy after that. But she mentioned several times charter revision. Our charter is exactly a hundred years old. It was enacted in March, March the 28th of nineteen twenty-two. And it's one of the oldest charters in the state. We've got a number of things in there that you should be aware of that are really outmoded and outdated. Section seventy-three, for example, says that it requires the vote of the people to assign a franchise. Section eighty-eight, the charities commission. I don't think that that has operated for years. Section ninety, Monavista Day, when we're supposed to close businesses for a half a day. I don't think I've seen that working either. Section sixty-eight, health officer. I don't think we have a health officer appointed. The Article Three of the charter, for example, recall. Do we really want the city clerk, the city treasurer, the police chief and the city manager subject to recall by the people? Because those are appointed officers. I don't know whether you knew all those things were in there, but that's representative of some of the things in our charter. There are other things that maybe we need to take a look at, which is the way that you have to pass ordinances with two readings. In statutory towns, for example, that is not a requirement. You can just have passage at the same time as a reading. And the only reason I mention that is that the length of time it takes you to really enact an ordinance is something that we may want to take a look at on charter revision. There are other things about the annual appropriations, ordinance and budget required to be submitted before the first day of October, but allows the council to fix the date. And section fifty-four requires passage of the ordinance between October 1st and November the 1st in comparison, the state statute twenty-nine, one, one oh eight requires the appropriations for the budget to be simply made by December the 31st and be submitted by the city manager by October the 15th. So these are things that we may want to take a look at. And I would glad to be part of and even head that charter revision process if you want me to do that. We, if, if you decide that that's the route that you want to go, we start, we should start thinking about a charter review committee. And that will probably morph into a charter revision, formal charter revision committee. So that's gonna take some time. It would have to go to the public vote. But that's something that really, it's kind of housecleaning in a way, but it has a lot of things in there about how you really operate, what you're supposed to be doing. Your charter in a home rule city is your governing document. It is your constitution, as it were. And everything has to be in conformance with that. There's some fairly complicated rules about how that relates to state statutes and when the city is preemptive, when it's not, when it can legislate side by side with state statutes and so forth. And that's another discussion to have. But I think this is something that we probably ought to start working on. Another thing, a more immediate thing, and I've talked to the city manager about this, the 2020 version of the MTC. Model Traffic Code is a code adopted by the city in which the provisions for governing traffic are lifted out of Title forty-two that a city can legislate on and put into a model traffic code. So there are, you gotta know the rules in those things because there are things that you can legislate on that go all the way up to twelve-point violations, like eluding a police officer, eight-point violations like reckless driving, so forth. Whereas other twelve-point violations and even eight-point violations regarding alcohol-related offenses, driving under the influence, driving while bodily impaired, you cannot legislate on. So about once every ten years, CDOT comes out with a new version of the Model Traffic Code. And the last one was the 2020 version. You're still on the 2010 version right now. So I've talked to city manager about this. I've talked to the police chief about this. And they're both in agreement that we need to get this done as soon as possible and bring in the new version. So that's something that I would intend to be working on. Another thing you may want to look at is your municipal court jurisdiction level. You're at still a thousand dollars and ninety days in jail, I think. And you have jurisdiction all the way up to two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars in one year. Now, not that you're going to have people incarcerated or have fines done, but there are some situations that the city could get into that you may want to say, well, we've only got jurisdiction to do it up this far. So I don't think it's gonna really make much difference as far as the sentencings go in municipal court, but it does improve your, your jurisdiction of what you have. So that's something that you may want to consider too. The Planning Commission, I went to the Planning Commission meeting last Thursday. And there are a lot of things in the mill right now about short-term rentals. We'll just call them STRs. And kind of a sister to that, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, that so many towns in the valley are facing. And these things can start getting pretty complicated when you start putting a lot of the short-term rentals in the middle of residential areas. Developing a good ordinance on STRs is a time-consuming process. And this is where a lot of moratoriums are usually enacted to, I think it took Del Nord about well over a year to enact their STR. So Watch did it in about six months or so. Crestone's working on it presently. Alamosa's got a lot of issues with STRs. And you will probably feel that pressure sooner or later. So these are things that we probably need to work on in the Planning Commission and the zoning too. We talked about the situation on, between Second and Third Avenues and the business district zoning. And I suggested perhaps a solution that might really satisfy all the concerns out there because you've got a nice clean zoning line there right now for business. Whereas if you try to divide that up between residences and, and business with a zoning line, you're gonna get something that looks like a line on a polygraph, you know? And you can actually recognize the zoning district as it is and yet provide also by a simple code amendment, the residential portion still being subject to the same residential zoning that it was before this without, without disturbing the zoning line. So that's something to think about as a possible solution there. I can see that we're gonna be working on murals in the next couple of weeks or so.
We've got thirty days.
I'd like to see it in two weeks.
Martha wants it tomorrow morning, if possible. So, yeah, but we will be working on that also. And the last thing I would like to do myself, if you guys are amenable to that, when I come into a new situation, I like to try to have a kind of an orientation session, you might call it, a retreat, you might call it, a training session. I hate to call it a training session because you folks have a lot of experience here in municipal law already. But going through all the different aspects that you get into in municipal law and how you handle those, in other words, things like home rule, what it's all about, preemption rules, that kind of thing when it comes to municipal home rule, to the mechanism for passing ordinances and codes by reference, how you do that. CORA, Colorado Open Records Act, COMA, Colorado Open Meetings Law, the ADA compliance things that you get into. It's, they're so numerous, it's hard to follow a complete litany of these things. But I would be willing to devote, you know, the better part of the Saturday or Friday afternoon or something like that if you folks would like to engage in something like that. So I just throw that out as an offer to you that you could do. And we could schedule that. It looks like the summer schedule's getting pretty tight already. And we'll have things like Stampede coming up before too long, but maybe we could fit that in. Seth is going to be helping me. He's in my office over here as an attorney. And he's from Colorado, he's a native, he's been around here a long time. And I'm real happy to have him. I don't know what I'd do there frankly without him, right? So once again, it's, thank you for bringing me back. Thank you for having confidence to do that. I look forward to working with the entire council. Feel free to call me at any time. Hopefully it's not gonna be two o'clock in the morning, but down at the office there, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you got or chat with you about any situation you want, so. And I would like to be able to chat with you freely too. Do you have any questions?
All right, at the moment, I do not. Anybody else? No?
Surprisingly, I don't either.
What's that?
Surprisingly, I don't either.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, sir.
Seth, you made me think, where did I get myself into?
Dang you, Jean.
City manager report?
Let's just go home.
Now to you.
I met with Peg Shaw, who heads up our community's historical society. That's something the county, or excuse me, I'm sorry, the city does help budget, gives them a little money every year. And she brought in the Little Colorado Prospector. That was printed back when the city celebrated its hundredth anniversary back in nineteen eighty-six. And so she thought, instead of just tossing out the box, that she's gonna start redistributing them around town just because it provides so much history. And so I told her that I thought all of you would want, want to have a copy of it. She also talked about, they've got a brochure for a walking and driving tour around Monavista. And they also have a pamphlet about our historic buildings downtown. So if you guys want to take a look at that, I'm happy to share. And then the transportation of the West Museum has reopened for the season. So they open from Memorial Day to Labor Day. It's ran just by volunteers and, and they don't have a lot of volunteers. But they are open from eleven to three on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. It's transportation. And then their little, the historical society building there on the grounds of the library, they are open on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, again from eleven to three. Sorry, we've got kind of a lot of dust going on in this building today. She said they've got over five thousand photos on, that they have on file and for people to go through. And, and so they sometimes get people in asking, you know, hey, do you have a picture of my eight, you know, great, great, great Uncle Henry? And they'll see what they can come up with, so. And they'll see what they can come up with, so. She was, it was very interesting and I told her that I would go, I would go visit and see what they are about. She thought that the rooms were large enough that she'd like to invite council to have a meeting with her or a meet, hold a public meeting in one of her buildings. And I told her that that probably wouldn't work out since we have to record and all that kind of stuff. But she has extended the invitation for all of you guys to go by and see what they've got in store. Peg's pretty amazing, I was trying to, I don't know, I'm guessing she's probably ninety-three-ish? Trying to compare with the age of my parent, what my parents would have been. So it was a good visit. I want to do a shout out and thank RG Bank. They treated all the staff to a cup of coffee. And so I hope you took your coupon down and was able to get that cup of coffee. And their thanks to the city for everything that we do for them. Also, the Rural Electric is having their annual meeting on Tuesday, June the fourteenth. If anybody's interested, we can get you registered. You know, the Rural Electric has been such a great partner with the city. And so if any of you want to attend, I'm sure that their staff would enjoy seeing you there.
What date is that again?
It's Tuesday, June the fourteenth. Registration starts around five thirty, but they'll do the presentation of the colors at six forty-five and start their business meeting at seven. And they are providing some sort of a meal, so they, they're trying to get an idea of the numbers so they can, and it's out at Sky High. In fact, he's, he has booked it now for like the next five years. He has saved the date for their annual meeting, so it's kind of cool. Received some good news today. Senator Hickenlooper has moved our application for the Sky High generator, generation, what do you call it, generator project? It has moved forward to the Homeland Security Appropriations Committee. And so it means we've made the next round. So each step, maybe we'll, we'll hit a home run on that. And so we thank Senator Hickenlooper for doing that for the city. Anita is working on electric charging stations. We've got a couple companies that have come forward and said, hey, we will make the investment and, and put them in if you can secure us some property to do it. And so we're exploring that and trying to make sure that, you know, there aren't any surprises at the end of this. But right now, we're currently talking with some of them about one out at Sky High because that was part of the plans. And so that, the basics have been put in out there. And then we're talking about two there at the Facet parking lot behind Rain Brew's building, so. Hoping that that would keep people downtown. Rob and the intern we're going to be having, DJ, and myself will be attending a Water Smart workshop at Adam State. It's for good part of Tuesday, win, all, good part of Wednesday, all day Thursday, and part of Friday of this next week. It's being hosted by the Sonora Institute. And their, their motive is to, for communities to start thinking about enacting Water Smart policies into future development. And after the drought that we've had this last twenty years, I don't know if any of you have gone north and just looked at the river, you can already see rock islands. The water's done. So we're going to go see what we can learn and become smart. And that's free of charge. We'll be on a team with Rio Grande, for just Rio Grande County. So there's supposed to be two participants from South Fork and two from the county. Del Norte couldn't commit anybody, so we'll be working with them. So a couple of weeks ago, we did a work session regarding Sky High and, you know, finding that balance of is it an event center or is it a recreation center? And so trying to decide what to do, I made the executive decision to say, okay, we're going to have it, we're going to put together a committee. And I've asked Jaime to pick two people. I've asked Stephanie to pick two people. And I picked three people. So we've got a committee, not quite yet full, but it's, will be a committee of nine that can hopefully, I've told both Stephanie and Jaime, they've got to be fair and balanced people. You know, we've got to figure, see how we can't get this worked out. I'm afraid, in all honesty, I would be biased. I'm not part of this committee. I've asked George, Dean Felter, to be the chairman, and he has accepted. And so we'll, we're going to charge ahead and see what we can come up with. You know, the labor is still what I'm really concerned about. And Stephanie and Oscar are really overwhelmed. We've got another, I mean, Saturday, she's got four events at Sky High again. Everything from a rodeo to a wedding, and I don't even remember what the other two are. So she and Oscar, either today or it'll be tomorrow, stringing wedding lights off the ceiling because we really don't want people that are renting the facility out there on high ladders or lifts and the potential of their injury. We've got, we still have an application, taking applications for a third person. And then this week, I put under contract a young man who is going to be taking care of some of the outside stuff that I also care about because that's the whole presentation. So he'll be pulling weeds, he'll be painting those picnic tables. He will be sweeping up the sand that gets up against the curb at the steps, picking up all the trash underneath the bleachers. You know, there's still construction trash, all the things that haven't been able to be addressed, so. We're moving onward, these are good growing pains, but, but it is a growing pain. And then finally, I wanted to talk about work sessions. And, you know, I don't know if you guys, if we can maybe come up with a regular date so that we get them on the calendar. And I think my preference would be to have a work session on the odd weeks that we don't have council meetings. But it's amazing, next week already, here it'd be an odd week, and yet on the seventh, we have Urban Renewal Authority at five thirty. And on June eighth, we have the One Scent Review Committee. So I sent you all a doodle poll with a couple dates and have not hit a home run on, on either June sixth or fifteenth. But a couple of the things that I want, we need to talk about is, you know, what, we had a really positive audit. And I want to thank Anita again for all of her work. I think she was a little frustrated at times because when the auditor wanted to point his finger, she took it a little personally. She takes great pride and does a wonderful job. But they weren't our mistakes. And, and so, you know, the mistake that he brought up at the very beginning of his presentation, and none of you asked a question, so that was good. But he talked about making a correction for a, what do you call it, when you write into the, I lost the word.
What, what?
The,
Journal entry.
A journal, thank you, thank you, journal entry. That was made in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, or twenty nineteen.
Twenty-one.
Was made in,
January.
January twenty twenty. It was not corrected in twenty twenty-one. And he just now found it. Well, that's really his error. I mean, it was a city error that it wasn't done properly, but he should have caught it last year and reported it. And so, so again, we've got new people, it's a new day. She's not taking ownership in that boo-boo. But, but the result, result is, is that you could see that we, we had some popular, or not popular, favorable growth. And I want to visit with you guys about putting a little money back into this building and making some capital improvements that need to be done. And Councilman Segala talked about this white building. And you're right, it's probably been white for what, forty, fifty years?
I was born here, I was sleeping in that nursery.
And I've talked with one architect, he's with CRHDC. And he said, you know, you could do a lot just by changing, you know, putting a couple different colors, contrasting colors on the outside and making things kind of pop a little bit. And then I thought, well, another mural on this far side. But, so I want to, we need to have a thoughtful discussion about that and, and give us some direction. We also need to have a discussion about how we spend our federal funding. And I've come up with a good list, met with staff, they've thrown in some input. I'm not quite ready to give it to you yet, only from the standpoint of, one of the, the recommendations, just to give you a little snapshot, is that we need to make some improvements as well to the IT side in our courtroom. Well, the estimate I got was nineteen thousand dollars. And I just find that unacceptable for a room that we use for less than ten hours once a month. That's a lot of money. So I called a friend down at the state courts. She said, Gigi, we're state, we're not municipal. But she reminded me of a man that I worked with when we built the Justice Center in Alamosa. And I called Tom today and he said, he said, Gigi, that's a lot of money for a room that's used that little. He said, I might even have the stuff that you need that you can get this done. So I want to, want to make sure that we kind of have some other ideas poked into this so that out of our ARC funding, you guys are saying, yeah, spend that nineteen thousand on, on the courtroom if we can come up with a much lesser investment that will get us basically the same results. But I still want to get moving on that. We need, you know, time is somewhat of the essence. We don't have to get it all spent, but we have to have it all earmarked. And, and we still have time on that as well. But on some of this stuff and what we're finding with trying to get contractors to give bids and such, they are all so busy. And so we just need to get our name on the list so we can move forward on some of this. And I think that's it. Dear council, any questions?
Thank you for what all you do. I know you're busy, I see your car down here on Fridays. Think I actually seen you here on Sunday.
Sometimes.
Yeah, so thank you, Gigi, I appreciate your devotion to the city.
We're going to get there.
Amen.
Together, together.
Thank you. Council Committee City Commission Counsel reports. Martha?
Okay. Pull up my notes here. I want to start with maybe just something to consider for planning and zoning. That board did just grow from two to five. So there are, you know, people on there that have a passion and a desire to serve, but I don't think a little education would hurt them. I don't think it would hurt us either. Maybe we could do it, Mr. Wilkerson came and did a PNC one oh one. Is that, do I have the right person?
So Mr. Wilkinson did Economic Development one oh one. And then Department of Local Affairs did a Planning and Zoning one oh one.
Okay, so we do have resources for some continuing education. And I think that would be beneficial to planning and zoning and to us. So I'd like, I'd like to see if we could look into that and, and check that out a little bit. Because I want to see our planning and zoning succeed, but we can't just say, okay, you know, planning and zoning, sink or swim.
So what other type of training then are you thinking about?
You know, I don't know enough about planning and zoning to know what sort of, so one oh one. You know, let's just start there.
Well, we kind of had that one already.
Well, okay, well, what's going to, what's going to add to the economic health of our city? What's going to help, what's going to add to the, I hate to use mental health, but I meant, what I mean is, what's going to, what's going to add to the, our citizens having pride in their city? You know, just, just what's going to lift us up? You know, what, what can we do to be, to be lifted up and encouraged? And, you know, we're already seeing some good things, but planning and zoning has a, has a major role in that. That's just something I want to toss out there for consideration. I'm not asking, I'm not formally asking for it, I'm asking for it to be considered.
Well, that kind of helps give me some ideas on what we can at least.
Sure, you know, what works in small rural towns? You know, what, what has worked, what has not worked? Maybe some case studies so we can see some examples of where a rural town tried something and it failed miserably, so we don't want to do that. And something where a rural town tried something and it was extremely successful, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
We can follow that model.
Well, and there's some of that stuff already that, like CML. If you guys, if you guys would look at your little flyers and.
Right, but planning and zoning, I don't think is going to CML, so.
No, they don't, but I mean, there's a lot of, they do a lot of case study examples.
Right.
And, and we can share that with them as well and.
Okay. Just, just something, I, again, I just don't want these people that we have, that I think are fantastic people or I wouldn't have been in favor of putting them on planning and zoning. But that doesn't mean they know everything there is to know about planning and zoning.
Sure.
And I don't know everything there is about anything. Pick a subject, I don't know all of it. There is a military send-off, it's already been mentioned, this coming Saturday, I believe. If you have never had the opportunity to go to one of these ceremonies, please go. It doesn't take a long time, but it is touching. It is. Thought provoking. You look at these young people and you realize what they're, you look at the world around us. You know, they're not just going to boot camp. They are standing up and they are doing something absolutely incredible. And they're willing to lay their lives down for it. Wow. That's a big thing when you, you know, you look at this young person and you realize they've already made that decision. And then you get to talk with them. And the whole idea, let me make sure I got the milit, make sure I got the name right, of proud military parents and supporters is, is bringing awareness that when a young person goes off like this, yes, it's important that their families support them, but it means so much to them, know that their community where they grew up is behind them too. And, and we can be that community, we can be that, you know, and, and they do all sorts of different things. They send care packages. One of the things that they're doing, I don't mean to be rude with my phone, but some of my notes are on here. On June sixteenth at seven PM at the Valley Theater, they're going to be playing Taking Chance. And it's, and the donations that are accepted, funds will be going towards care package for our, care packages for our local military men and women at Christmas. And there will be several. And there'll be several second chance drawings that'll take place after the movie. I'm not really sure what that means, but they do, maybe y'all do. So, anyway, I really want to, want to encourage you to support that organization, support what they do. Support our young people making this decision, making this commitment. Support them now. And, and not, not to be dreary, but we may not see them again, to support them again. We pray for something different, but we need to face that reality. So, we need to say goodbye to them and that we're behind them. And then, I've got, oh, I, I did a, I talked to some people, did some social media. Just kind of did a, I'm really proud of Montavista. And I'm proud to live here and work here. If you don't share that, I mean, I can't remember exactly how I ordered it. If you don't share that, what are some of your ideas? And there were a lot of them, and y'all can go and look at that. But one of them really stuck out, and it seems to relate to something that happened in the meeting tonight. Our Public Works Department, Rob said, is not ready for summer, no fault to your own. No fault to your own at all. We've had, we've got, we've had a little bit going on, so get it. But one of the people suggested that some, some cities, some small towns, offer apprenticeships for young people. And they work for the whole summer, they get a small stipend, thousand, somewhere between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars, you know, for working that whole summer as an apprentice. If that would help any department in our city, not just Public Works, I'm not picking on Rob, uh, because I think Rob's doing a fantastic job. He's just had a lot of other things to do, like cleaning up a fire scene. But maybe that would give, you know, a little, a little bit of pocket money to some young people that, if they're saving up for their first car, or maybe they saving up for, you know, their dorm at college, or I, I don't know what their reasons are. Maybe they want to blow it on video games, I don't care. But it puts them in a working environment where they're learning something. They're learning a trade of some, at least they're, if nothing else, they're learning a job that they, they don't want, ever want to do again. You know, and sometimes, as we go through life, that's some of the biggest lessons we can learn is, okay, don't want to do that again, move on. And, but, but they get paid for it, and they're taught a work ethic. And I would expect anyone that they served under to teach them a very good and, and by example, show them a good work ethic. You know, maybe somebody wants to be an accountant, maybe Anita could help them out. I, I, this is just a suggestion. And then, the last thing is, you know, I'm just super stinking excited about all the summer events that are, that are coming up. And what makes me so excited about that is, not only are they events that have been traditional, like Stampede, Potato Fest, I'm assuming we're going to have Potato Fest. But we have got, in this town, right now, we have got citizens stepping up. They're not waiting for the government to do it, they're not waiting for the chamber to do it, they're not waiting for the Historical Society to do it, or, you know, URA or anything. They're stepping up. One woman has created a third Friday Art Walk. She's got a lot of volunteers behind her. You know, we've, we've got, the optimistics have, well, they started this last year, but it's sort of an annual, it's already, sort of already an assumed annual thing is Cinco de Mayo and, and the Beer Fest and Car Show in cooperation with Poor Boys Doing the Car Show. You know, so these, and, and these are all just people that just started doing something, got out there and started trying, and other people joined in with them. And now, we have citizens doing things. And that, right there, is one of the reasons I'm so proud of Montavista and Montavista citizens. Oh, and, and the lady that, that started the whole mural project. I don't know if she's doing all of these, if she has, you know, done all these, or if other people are going to step up, but I'm sure other people will. So, I see that growing. I, I see the beautif, beautification downtown growing, and I think that's a very important thing. Those are just the ones I can think of off the top of my head. I know there's a lot of other people doing a lot of other things. I'm just, I'm just, like I said, just a stinking proud to see that, I can't stand it. So, way to go, Montavista. And thank you all for allowing me to have an excused absence last meeting. That's the first one I've missed in almost two and a half years, and it felt very odd. I couldn't wait to watch the video, because I felt like I really missed out. But I appreciate that. It was my daughter's graduation, and given the choice between that and pretty much anything else in the world, I was not going to miss her graduation. So, that's my report, thank you.
Gotcha. Mr. Foster?
I'll be short and sweet. Gigi, in reference to a previous email, keep saying the word opportunity. And Mr. Ferrish, welcome.
I don't have anything.
I'm good, we did. Monty Strong, thank you all very much. We'll have more discussions another, another time. We will recess this meeting to, uh, June sixteenth at six PM.